Stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Introduce him please.
So the board members present tonight are Rob Jones, Lisa Peter, Jessica Van Hort, Perry Brown, Rich Hewlett, and my assistant Kristin Powers. If you're in the audience this evening and if you intend to speak, you'll have to identify yourself before speaking. And friendly reminder that all questions are directed to the Chair of the Board. Unfortunately Zoom is not working this evening. I was having some troubles getting the internet connection. So I think it's not required this evening, so we do it as an additional benefit, so there's no Zoom this evening. Addition to the agenda this evening is an executive session to discuss labor relations agreements with employees, which will be at the end of the meeting. Otherwise, no other additions from me, and I don't have any deletions. And the minutes that are in need of approval are from September 19th.
How does everybody feel about the minutes?
I'm glad that we approved the minutes from September 19th.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried. Was there any announcements? zoning administrators report?
Aye, so we're at 30-inch format here today. And the discussion, my discussion tonight is really about that 36-inch wide format printer. We went back to the original vendor as well as identified the additional vendor. I had given you numbers there to look at. So the original vendor dropped this price by about $1,000 on the cheaper 36-inch model. But there's also a competitive quote for an HP product. And then I provided both maintenance schedules on the two, the size. It all comes down to about a $600 difference between a Canon and an HP. We in the office would be happy with either one of those models. They would both suit the purposes that we need a wide format printer for. There's advantages and, or pros and cons to each of them. We found the Canon we identified, because a lot of the towns in the area use that one. The HP we were unaware of, but I talked to the City of St. Albans today. They do use that one and they've been very happy with it. So the other advantage is, we found out too, that the service for the HP would come out of Granville. The service for Canon would come out of Burlington. So that's where we went. Oh, and you'll see there too, you had asked me about a lease option. The lease option actually books out to at least twice the price, initial price. So it's a five-year lease. They require, it's about a $200 a month lease, but they also require you to take a service agreement at $100 a month. So it ends up being almost $300 a month to do a lease option. And it costs out at about $18,000 at the end of five years.
It looks like the lease option is not a great one. I don't think the lease option is a good option there.
No.
Well, I got a question for Nancy. Has anybody talked with Julie to see what's in the budget, available in the budget for that printer?
Yes, so evidently it was previously budgeted. And I think there was also an indication that we could use ARPA funds for whatever wasn't budgeted.
There was, there was that discussion last year.
So, so Rich, to answer your question, my understanding from Julie is that there's plenty of money to cover the costs with.
Frank?
I think it's a wonderful addition to, with this mapping capability. With the database being updated and this mapping, it should make things a lot easier across the board for people coming in and also the staff.
So you really don't care which, which option we go with?
No, it's, like I said, we'd be happy with either one. The HP was the one, comes out of that office in Albany. And they were actually through, I guess some program they have with municipalities. It's actually a more expensive machine, but through the agreement with the municipalities, it ends up costing less money than the Canon.
And their maintenance is a three-year plan for cheaper rather than a two-year, so. I mean, it looks to me like the HP is the better deal.
Okay. You want to put that in the form of a motion?
Sure, I will, I move that we authorize the purchase of this HP T830 printer.
I'll second that.
Do you have all the numbers, including the, including the maintenance program?
Pass it down to, everybody should have a copy of it.
For 76, 29, 21.
Yep.
The, the one at the bottom?
Yep. 76, 29, 21 would be the total with the maintenance.
Kristin, I have it in the form of a quote, should you need it.
Okay, I think I have, I have the printout, is that, I think for the, thank you.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried. Thank you for working on that Nancy. Frank?
Does Julie need the, the other quote for the records on the purchase?
No, Nancy and her will get together if she's looking for it. Planning Commission's report?
Yes, I have a report. The Planning Commission met on Monday, September 25. Most of the meeting was taken up with revisions to the town plan. Noting here that the revisions are minor. As the 2016 town plan, the most recent one, was very thorough and still largely represents the direction of the town. We didn't complete the revisions at that meeting, so we are going to set aside the entire time at our next meeting. And we are going to lengthen the time of our next meeting to two hours in order to attempt to complete the revisions to the town plan. The intention is to warn our November meeting as the public hearing for this town plan update. And then we would, as usual with the town plan bylaws, the Planning Commission would send it on to the Select Board to then look at and warn their own meeting. It needs to be completed by February, so we're trying to fast track this. That's my report.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Frank does.
Frank?
So the meeting's starting at seven instead of 7:30, so we're gonna start at the same time, just like 4:00.
Okay.
Yeah, and we'll send, we'll send that out in the agenda.
Thank you. Road Foreman's report?
Oh, there's nothing really to add at this time. We can, there's some things to discuss in the executive session, but at this point, there's nothing to report.
One, one item to report is that I received a call from Patrick Wilson as a follow-up to the letter that we had sent about the Max Market parking. And they met with the Traffic Committee on the State, and they would like to come down to the site to visit with a, with a traffic safety control specialist, I'm, don't quote me on the name, as well as some members of the town. So, so far, I've let Perry and Rich know, if anybody else would like to come, we'll just have to warn it as a meeting, as a special meeting, which would be fine. It is going to be, I believe on October 11th in the morning. So if anybody's interested in attending else from the Board, let me know and we can warn that. But the idea is that they believe some of the requests have already been put into effect a number of years ago, so they'd like to see if they need to update any of those in addition to the extension of the parking idea.
Regarding the, regarding the Road Foreman's report, I have a little thing to add here. I've been speaking with Devin at Rutland Regional Planning Commission about our municipal technical assistance. And I did mention to him our need for a new town garage, which he indicated to me is not something that he can necessarily help with this program. But he did get me, he mentioned that Tinmouth had recently put in their new town garage. He got me connected with Gail Fuller, who is the Tinmouth Town Clerk and Treasurer. And she would be willing to talk to someone from our Select Board about how they did the engineering, funding, and construction of their garage. She says they had some pitfalls that they had hit, that they thought we might be able to avoid. So I don't know, I assume one of our road liaisons might want to talk with her. But I can get her info to whoever would like to speak to her about what they did.
I'd chat with her about it.
Okay. I will send you her email and phone. Great, thank you.
What's her name?
Her name is Gail Fuller. Yeah, she's the Tinmouth Town Clerk.
Anything else? Harley?
Is, a salt shed, maybe not a town garage, but salt sheds, I think I saw listed as funding possibly available for. Did Devin say anything?
Devin did mention about salt sheds, yes. Several towns in the area have gotten funding to put in salt sheds. And he mentioned, am I correct in remembering that currently we keep our sand and salt in two locations?
That's right.
He thought, he said that putting in two smaller salt sheds would be way cheaper than putting in one big salt shed. I forget the exact numbers he gave me, but evidently a lot of towns lately who've been seeking money for salt sheds have put in two more moderately sized ones. So that is something that there is grant funding available for often, yeah.
Yeah, we just need to determine.
Where?
Where, and what, and how. And everyone's got different thoughts, I got different thoughts, and a lot of people in town also, and it's just.
Okay, anything else? Assessors' report? Nothing from the assessors this month. Town Clerk's memo?
Um, let's see. So Deb will be out of the office for the remainder of the week. I can, for some personal reasons. So she just asked that her folder for the Select Board be passed along, so it's not organized. Oh, there was, let's see. There was a letter that came that was forwarded to everybody from PEG TV. That came from Deb. They're asking that we sign a letter. So PEG, let's see.
I saw that, emails.
There's a proposed bill. The Community Media Public Benefit Fund Bill. So everybody's been, there's been an email that's gone on around about this to you all. And my understanding is that PEG TV is just asking for the Select Board's support. So if you'd like to support that, or if you'd like to review the email, and then perhaps each person could write back to me individually and let me know if you're okay with that, and then we can submit the letter back.
The email came out last week, it looked, it looked like it was a good way for them. They're, they're in the process of getting a more stable funding source, but that's kind of a short term.
So.
I think it looked fine.
You didn't see anything?
No, I think, I think we should support that.
Okay. I can take care of submitting that letter back. Okay, looks like there was a notice of initial Act 250 application filing. I believe this was also emailed around to all of you, but I believe that there should be a copy for everybody if you want to take a look at those. And the only other item it looked like for to-dos was the speed sign on Rupert Mountain Road. But I actually went up and took a look at that last week. I was up that way, and it appears that it just was unplugged. So I plugged it back in, and then I went back up a couple of days later, and it was back up and running, so that's been remedied.
Oh, this, this was the one I had to sign.
I don't think we have to sign this at all. We don't have to sign this notice.
I'm not sure, there's no memo attached, I'm just looking through the folder.
Okay.
Okay. So if you're not interested in keeping those.
We didn't say anything about the PEG TV, does everybody, anybody want to look that over more? Or are we okay, we're just, I'm supporting the PEG TV funding.
No, I'm fine with it. Yeah, I'm fine with it.
That's good, okay. Somebody want to make that a motion?
Sure, I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried. Is there anything more than just reviewing that Act 250 application?
Do you think those copies were all meant for you? If not, I can take them, return it back to Deb's folder if you don't have anywhere you want to file them.
We got electronic, we did get it electronically too, didn't we?
I believe you did, yep. I'm sure she'll be able to provide a copy, I just don't want to take anything from her that she might need. Okay, I think that's, seems like that's all from.
Okay, the town treasurer?
The town clerk's office. From the town treasurer, there's a memo. There are two warrants this week. Payroll is $10,622.43. Accounts payable is $129,076.75. This includes the appropriations paid after September tax collection. General fund monies are $124,848.88. Highway fund monies $14,177.61. Waste water fund monies $672.69. My most recent communication from Berkshire regarding the truck loan was on Monday, the 2nd. There's a new person taking over this loan, so a small hiccup. I'm waiting to hear from the seller on a full VIN, and then there will be docs ready to send to the town for next steps. The budget meeting is on October 24th. I've asked for information from department heads to be in my hands by October 17th. Please let me know what you'd like to have ahead of time. I will leave for the next meeting. Please sign the municipal equipment loan application, which is due by October 15th. Respectfully submitted, Julie Mack. The motions that are needed this evening are for payroll warrant, 24016 for $10,622.43. And accounts payable warrant, 24017 for $129,076.75.
Do we have a printout of, I'm sorry, do we have a printout of the municipal equipment loan application?
Uh, yes.
Sorry Bob, we stepped on your motion. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion, we approve the two warrants.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried.
Alright, so this, it looks like these both have signatures for you, Mike.
Everybody in favor of me signing this municipal equipment loan?
That's with Berkshire?
What's that?
Is that with Berkshire? Is that the one in regards to?
No, this is, this is the Vermont municipal, this is the application, right?
Oh yeah, it looks like this is the application for that, the state municipal equipment loan fund that would have been at a significant, is at a significantly lower amount, just to, to apply for it. So, and I'm not sure what that one is.
This is a credit application for Allegiance Trucks. Either one, or a purchase agreement.
And I know the rate was a lot higher through Allegiance than through Berkshire.
For this one here to, so we're all in favor of signing these two?
Yeah, I mean, we already agreed to make the purchase, so.
Any more discussion about the treasures?
Um, let's see, there's one other thing. Nope, there's no actions needed, so, no, that's everything.
Emergency management director? Nothing from that. Health officer? Nothing from Jennifer, maybe she would have come on, but, okay. I have to hold it for next. Waste water treatment? I don't think we heard anything from Jill this week, this month, everything seems to.
Nope, I haven't seen anything since.
Well, I haven't heard of them doing any of the repairs yet, but I know they were planning on getting here this month, so. Metowee School?
No, nothing tonight.
Oh, Town Hall Waste Water, Town Hall too.
Facilities.
Under facilities.
So you did send out a message about the heat?
Yeah. So Jake said that he could get that evaporator, what was it, 25, he said?
Estimated 25.
He estimated 25, it's like two months out. So I think that we probably should get that going.
We're, and we're okay the two months without it.
Well, we have heat, right?
Yeah.
We have the other heat up there, that'll just be a more efficient way to heat you upstairs, should we need anything, so. If we're all, all okay with that, I'll, I'll pass that on for him. And also, he said, let me find the email. He said that he would, and still use the same quote for the, uh, for the heater in the Town Hall. Or not the, not the sewer plant.
Yeah.
Repair, I think it was 3250 or something.
Is he two months out for that one also?
I don't think it's quite far, it's quite as far out.
Because I know they have the one working one in there, but they'll want the other one before it gets really cold.
Right.
Did we already have that in the motion, right? I think we did with getting that heater going.
3850. Okay, remove the old 30, 30 KBTU hand garage heater and replace with the new Modine. 3850 is what it was. Do we want to act on that so that that, and I know right now he's at least two weeks out on, on just his work scheduling, so I bet it'd be a month or more before.
And he replaced one last year.
He replaced one last year.
Yeah, I think that one needs to be replaced as well.
Yeah, they were both, he fought to keep one of them going enough to get the new one in, so. Do you want to go?
It's a couple months out, we should pull the trigger on it.
Yeah, the good thing about it is he does have a little breathing room, so. Okay, so we'll get that one coming too, I'll talk to him. And get those, those two built, those two heaters done.
Probably should be a motion due to the price.
I know we already discussed it, I didn't know if we had a motion. I'll make a motion that we follow through with purchase of that heater.
We're getting both of those, the one in the Town.
Installation of it.
The one for the upstairs of the Town, the auditorium, and the one in the wastewater treatment plant.
So this is to purchase the heaters, the Modine heater?
Have Williams Mechanical put them, install the new heaters.
I'll second that.
No, the one for the wastewater was 3850.
So the Town Hall is 2500?
Yeah.
And wastewater treatment facility is, say one more time?
3850. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carried.
While we're still on facilities, I got an email just today from Meg Campbell from the Preservation Trust. She wants to come around next Thursday at 11:00 AM and look at the Town Hall and the library to see how they're doing, and she wants to talk with somebody who knows about the repairs and things that have been done on them in the last year, and what we intend to do in the next year. So I don't know why she messaged me on that, but I wanted to find out who might be available to talk to her about that.
Harley?
Harley's raising his hand.
Okay. Yes, Harley.
Yes, um, did you say 11 o'clock next Thursday?
11 next Thursday, yes.
And I could certainly be there for the library, I don't have much information about this building. I don't know much about the library either, but I can at least make something up.
See how much has changed except for roofwork and things like that?
And the, the heat pump we put in upstairs.
Yeah. Now this is, the person who's going to be talking to the, um, energy thing, where are they, are they going to come down and see us and then grant?
They haven't scheduled that yet. We have, we've been approved for the energy audits. And Rutland Regional Planning Commission is getting a contractor to do them. And once that contractor is ready, they will let us know. So we don't have a date yet for them to come down.
So does she know, the Preservation Trust person, about that?
I don't know what she knows, Frank. I have not spoken to her, all I know is that she's coming up next Thursday.
Oh, she'll know next Thursday, right?
Meg Campbell is the person in charge of Preservation Trust. She wants to make sure the building looks exactly like it did.
Yeah, historically.
From the road. She comes in tachsuma every year to make sure we didn't make any changes that, that changed the house, building, so.
Yeah, so I can, I can message that, I can forward that to you, Harley, if you're able to meet with her. And I will, let's see. Yeah, I don't think there's anything else we've done to this building other than repaired the door.
Well, Julie could pull all that up if, if needed be, but I don't.
Yeah.
Really, did we do anything to the porch this year? Nothing.
That was last year when we repaired the porch.
So.
And we replaced it with what it was, so.
Yeah.
I think we should be in good shape.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great.
Okay.
I can show her the lighting upstairs.
We did put those in.
That might get her attention.
Those were approved.
Anything else on facilities? Older unfinished business?
I have a couple things on older unfinished business. One is that, remember that grant we did a while back? The Bo-Ret Grant, which was for the rail trail stuff? Well, we have put out an RFP and gotten a, and the committee has approved one of our proposals. This is for someone to look at that building that might, that is being under consideration for a welcome center. That one that's owned by Bruce. That one that's owned by Bruce. And, um, someone's going to do an engineering study of it to see if it's structurally sound and draw up some architectural plans. Um, we, the committee decided that we wanted to go with the proposal from Marble Valley Engineering, which came in at not more than, let me get you the amount here. Not to exceed the amount of nine thousand, nine hundred twenty-two dollars. And this we, and the grant actually was budgeted for forty thousand, so this came in significantly under. This never happens, right? So, and they're out of Rutland. And their proposal looked good to the grant committee. And so, um, we proposed that, and this is a hundred percent covered grant, so this is nothing out of the town's pocket. So, we propose that the town go ahead and contract with Marble Valley Engineering for this study. So, I have the, I have the contract here if anyone wants to have a look through it at all, but it all looks, it all looks in order. The only thing I've asked him to do is that they have to send us the, um, their insurance. The copy of their insurance, so that we can have that on file. Any questions about this?
Seems like a.
Alright. Um, I guess I'll move that we, I'll move that we sign this contract then.
Second. There are second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Rick.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Post carried.
Alright. I think, Mike, you're the duly authorized agent right here. And I'll get this back to him and make sure that we get the copy of their insurance. And then I do have one more thing in old business. So, the other thing I have in old business is the municipal technical assistance that we're getting from Rutland Regional Planning Commission to help us apply for grants. I met with Devin about that again. That had been where he thought he was going to come out here, but there was a mix-up. Um, he, he wanted to make sure that the project that we wanted help with was in fact the wastewater plant, which I think we had already gone over before. Um, and he still has to get together with John Kirnman, who is the, the other person who was helping us with the wastewater. So, that's where it is. He, he had messaged John Kirnman, but they weren't able to get together right away. So, he's, there's, we're still waiting on the two of them to touch base and talk about what's been done already, so that there's no duplication. So, once there's more information on that, I will, I will get back with the select board on it. But, that's my report on that.
Okay. Anybody else have any older unfinished business? Okay. New business, Otter Creek CUD report.
Alright. This is where I had hoped to have a beautiful thing to show you on the screen, but I do not. So, I will, I will read off some stuff to you, and then I will hopefully show you a beautiful picture that if you want to come look at later closer up, you certainly can. So, the Otter Creek CUD, the Communication Union District, which is made up of the member towns of Benson, Brandon, Castleton, Chittenden, Fairhaven, Goshen, Hubbardton, Mendon, Paulette, Pittsburgh, Poltonie, Rutland Town, Rutland City, Shrewsbury, Sudbury, Wells, West Haven, and West Rutland. All of these towns have got together to provide high-speed fiber internet to the unserved and underserved locations in our, in our respective towns. So, um, a, a yearly report has gone out. I am, I am the Paulette representative to the Otter Creek CUD. The yearly report has gone out to the select boards, which I forwarded around to all the other select board members. Um, the gist of it is that Otter Creek CUD is pleased to announce that the Vermont Community Broadband Board has officially approved Otter Creek CUD's construction grant application, giving the green light to the first phase of our mission to bring high-speed fiber broadband to rural communities of Rutland County. This project phase targets four thousand, one hundred thirty-five locations in a number of towns, including Paulette. I'm not going to read off all the towns again. Construction is slated to begin in early twenty-twenty-four and is projected to be completed by the end of twenty-twenty-five. The attached map shows the areas funded for construction. Otter Creek CUD invites you to go to our website for ongoing news and updates. Enclosed with this letter is Otter Creek CUD's twenty-twenty-three annual report and budget for twenty-twenty-four. And so, you all have that to look at if you need. And the map, which I wanted to show on the big screen, but I'm going to pull up right now, shows in blue what has already been built out by our partner, who we are about to sign a contract with, Consolidated Communications. And also in orange, what is going to be built out over the course of the next two years. So, you folks can see the map here. I will pass it around. If you want to look at this square here is us. This orange is where they're going to build out in the next two years with the grant funding we just got. You can see the roads in West Paulette that are going to be covered right here. So, this is their map of what they're going to be building out. And I'm going to try to make this a little larger here for folks, so maybe our audience can also get a chance to see. Alright. A little hard to see, but the square here, here's Granville. This square here is the town of Paulette. And you'll see all these orange lines along the roads here in West Paulette are the places where the high-speed internet is going to be built out. And this is going, um, come and see me afterwards if you want to look and see if your road is on here. But, it will cover all of the unserved locations, the entire, the unserved by internet locations in our town, and the underserved ones. So, the ones that have that crappy, um, two-point-five speed DSL that a lot of folks in West Paulette have, fiber is going to be run out there. So, that's, that's the, the update, uh, from the Otter Creek CUD.
And most of this town, side of town has much better communication now?
Yeah. Most of the Paulette side has fiber through VTEL. The village itself is served by it, and pretty much everywhere out along one-thirty-three. And, um, and along Highway thirty is also served by VTEL already. So, yeah, so the goal is to get the high-speed fiber internet to everyone in the town.
Any questions, Frank?
What's an interesting point is that Xfinity serves high-speed internet in West Paulette. Do they do out here way? So, this is going to.
They don't on Briar Hill.
Right. But this is going to provide any overlapping Xfinity with fiber, so there probably will be a competitive competition where you have a choice in those areas between going with fiber or the Xfinity. That's what, that's what appears.
Yeah. Having, having more choices would be great. It'll drive down the cost.
Okay. Any more questions? Any more new business? Public comment?
Uh, I spoke with John Folger about some of the ideas you were kicking around in the sewer plant. And, uh, he still has ideas, because he worked there. And it might be a good idea just to talk with him offhand, just to, he had some friction with a previous select board, I believe, and that was a problem, but I don't think you guys have any problem with John. And, uh, but he was mentioning how difficult it was to draw fifty feet up. And he said there's a similar problem out in Spruce Scum from that tank out there, apparently. So, that is, it was his point was a major concern with both of those locations.
Anybody else? Jay?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here to compliment Merrill Bent on the job that she's doing. She's certainly done an excellent job, considering we haven't had any of the, uh, support from the state, any of the state agencies that we might have expected. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yes. Daniel Bonney from five-four-one Briar Hill Road. I come today, uh, as you may know, I'm filming a documentary film. And I'm not sure if any of you have been privy or even had the audacity to read this book. I think you should, if you haven't. But in here, it talks about what I plan to elaborate to the general public and the people essentially worldwide and what's happened. If you didn't hear today already, the new arrest warrant was not signed, so you lost. So, I got a small victory for once. So, I, I hope that stings, because I've been losing, but now you, you guys lost. But in this book, it speaks very specifically about what I am uncovering of all you people, not you. Mr. Hewlett, Ms. Van Orde, Mr. Beecher, Mr. Jones. Favoritism, nepotism, and corruption, right? And the general public doesn't, they're not privy. They're not able to see that Mr. Bob Jones, you work for Mr. Hewlett. You work for Deer Flat Farms. You're a partner in a conglomerate with his rich Hewlett Trucking. But you sit on this board and other boards and cast a vote for a radical ideology against you. You're the puppet to him. You do whatever he says to do. So, I don't stand a chance when I go up against boards where you sit on. That's the corruption. There's a specific chapter in here about conflict. Like, you should recuse yourself, right? That, that's just completely, you're getting away with it, and you guys are feeling very victorious about it. But I'm going to shed a light on it that's beyond your small constituency and these other folks here that are, that are profiteering somehow by negating my rights, right? I mean, Mr. Jones, you sent an email to Rebecca Hewlett saying, "I'm the most hated person you ever encountered." That's a tough thing to say as a public elected official. Like, you don't hate anybody more than you hate me? I mean, I, I know you're going to stay quiet today, because the, the microphone and the lenses are on you guys right now, right? But it's, it's inappropriate, right? It's inappropriate to collude with this man, to be in, in cahoots with this man, to negate my constitutional rights. And it's, it's, it's deplorable. It's, it's deplorable. Mr. Beecher?
I just have to interrupt real quick. The rules of procedure for the select board here is that if you're not pre-requested for public comment, you have two minutes to speak. Pre-requested appearances have to be pre-requested on the agenda.
Well, I didn't see that anywhere. You let other people talk all the time, so I'm going to continue to talk. It's my right. I'm a citizen. I'm attached.
For three minutes.
You just don't like to hear what I'm saying.
Wrap it up in three minutes.
Please.
So, you sit on the board here, your boys on, on the planning commission, whatever. You know, you write these letters, you say these negative things about me, right? Because, but how, how deep does your hate really go? Like, is it that deep? You hate me? You hate the Second Amendment? You're wasting all of these taxpayer dollars for you and your little friend Merrill Bent to have your victorious leadership? Who runs this town? Merrill Bent and you, or the rest of you? Right? You're going to lose, because the general populace and the people are going to be able to see how evil your behaviors are. The Second Amendment has been around for a long time. You're not going to negate that. You're not going to stop the type of people that come into your town, right? You think you are, Mr. Beecher, but you're not going to. You took some victories, but y'all lost. Not you.
Okay, so, your three minutes are up.
No, it's not up.
Yes, it's up.
No, my three minutes are not up.
Your three minutes are up.
No, my three minutes are not up. So, Ms., Ms. Van Orde.
Please sit down.
No, your three minutes are not up.
Your three minutes are up.
Address the chair.
You've never.
Address the chair.
You've never.
Address the chair.
Ms. Van Orde has never.
Address the chair.
But she's never spoken to me.
Three minutes are up.
Address the chair.
Your three minutes are up. Please sit down.
The three minutes are not up.
The three minutes are up.
The three minutes are not up.
The three minutes.
The three minutes are not up.
Are only.
You just said that, because what I'm saying is the truth and hurts. That's what, why the three minutes are up.
The three minutes are stated every, every year when we start.
Not every year. It's not every year.
Every May, when we do your.
The three minutes are not up. I'm a taxpayer.
No, I shut people down all the time. Three minutes are up.
You're just going to shut people down all the time.
But Ms. Van Orde, you decide to go.
You want to address, you address the chair.
Don't, don't put your hands on me, bro. No, no, you can't ask me. This is.
You can respect.
I respect you, however. You don't like what I'm saying. You don't like what I'm saying. It's, it's your problem here, okay? No, 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 no. You did not say you're a fucking police officer. You can see, you just got in our face. Tone it down.
No.
No, you're not here for a reason, okay?
Alright, let's suspend this meeting.
Go back there and relax.
Have a motion to suspend the meeting?
I'm moved to suspend the meeting.
All in favor? Alright, second?
You're here because you're a blue shit.
I.
You're the saint. Yeah, you are the saint.
Mrs. Van Orde.
Go. It's not, that's not how it works, man. It's not how it works. It's not how it works. You people don't like what we're saying, because it's the truth. You're evil racist fucking people. This man's father and him defrauded the United States government. They watered down milk.
This meeting is over.
He's a taxi. He's a.
This meeting is over.
Right, because you don't like, we're going to keep coming to every meeting and holding you folks accountable until you put it down to thirty seconds. I'm a taxpayer here. You've had the mic with Vermont Digger, Rutland Journal, Manchester. You're saying all this rhetoric, but I'm saying the truth. You let your sister have closed bids in this community, wasting thousands of taxpayer dollars. You and your son were forced how you want. It's not that way. It doesn't work that way. Good, go home. You're all a bunch of weak sides, and you're all going to be held accountable. We're going to hold you. You think your little publications in the Manchester Journal, you're going to be on national television for your hate and racism. You're a scumbag. That's what you are. Hate to use that language. That's what you are. And all these people that are supporting you are just as evil. I'm going to come to every meeting to get my point across. You have violated my rights. You've taken away my existence in this community, you and your degenerate staff here. You're a bad person. You're a bad person. And I'm going to make you and your family completely highlighted for your behaviors.